Okay, welcome everyone. I call this meeting to order for Tuesday, April 23rd, 2024. Please note that a copy of the Open Meetings Act is located on the north wall of the Legislative Chamber and that an automatic external defibrillator is available in the back wall as well. Please stand for the Pledge of Allegiance.
Our pledge of allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice drawn.
We will now commence with the Board of Equalization meeting. Roll call, please.
Commissioner Borgeson.
President.
Commissioner Boyle.
Here.
Commissioner Kavanaugh. Commissioner Garcia is absent. Commissioner Morgan.
Here.
Commissioner Rogers, Mr. Chair.
Here. Thank you, Mr. Clerk. First item of business are items A and B on the Board of Equalization agenda. A is, sorry, approval of the minutes of the Board of Equalization meeting held Tuesday, April 16th, 2024. And B, a call for a meeting and set Tuesday, April 30th, 2024, as a date for hearing on certified assessment corrections reflecting the addition of omitted property to the tax rules or increased value on property. And do I have a motion and a second?
I'll move.
Motion by Commissioner Morgan, second by Commissioner Rogers. Roll call? Or vote? Please, please vote. By the way, it's Purple Tie Day. Who didn't get the memo? All right. Deal with that later.
Motion passes six to zero.
Thank you, Mr. Clerk. Next item of business are Resolutions C through E, which can include adjournment. Do I have a motion and a second? Motion to approve and adjourn by Senator Rogers and a second by, excuse me, Commissioner Rogers and a second by Commissioner Morgan? Please vote. Demote him.
Motion passes six to zero.
Thank you, Mr. Clerk. Old habits. Um, we will now commence to the Board of Corrections meeting. Roll call, please.
Commissioner Borgeson.
President.
Commissioner Boyle.
Here.
Commissioner Kavanaugh. Commissioner Garcia is absent. Commissioner Morgan. Commissioner Rogers. Mr. Chair.
Here. First item of business is approval for minutes of the Board of Corrections meeting held on Tuesday, March 12th, 2024. Do I have a motion and a second? Motion by Commissioner Rogers, second by Commissioner Boyle? Please vote. Thank you, Mr. Clerk. Next item of business is the Director's Report from Corrections Director Mike Myers. Welcome, Mike.
Thank you. Good morning, Commissioners.
Morning.
You have before you my report for the month of March of 2024. After nine months of the fiscal year, we were, or are, $212,925 over budget. However, we made some housing unit consolidations in April, which will bring us back into budget compliance. $600,423 were spent on overtime costs in March. While this is a significant increase, the rate of overtime actually decreased slightly as there were three pay periods in March, which increased the amount by one-third. And nearly $800,000 in bond payments was processed by our records division. Enclosure number two, Community Corrections and Reentry Services. The Sanction Center and Transitional Discharge Center placed six individuals in community corrections, which saved 45 bed days. Work release admitted 35 individuals. House arrest admitted 47 individuals. The Reentry Assistance Program, or RAP, admitted 16 individuals, and eight individuals in RAP were referred to intensive outpatient treatment. Reentry Services and Therapeutic Communities, 48 individuals were referred to therapeutic community housing units, and 19 individuals were referred to intensive outpatient treatment. And we worked with Region Six to develop a process for the reinstatement of payment for substance abuse disorder evaluations after the funding stream had been disrupted due to a technicality for several months. And four individuals earned a GED. Pretrial Services, 221 individuals were placed on pretrial release. Over the course of the month, 1,290 individuals were supervised on pretrial release. 514 individuals participated in the 24/7 sobriety program. 123 individuals were supervised via GPS monitors. 2,961 jail bed days were saved as a result, resulting in a theoretical savings of $355,320 in detention costs. Law library usage on the tablet system continues to demonstrate increased access with cost efficiencies for Douglas County. Enclosure number three, Compliance. Regular recording of all compliance-related data continues. Enclosure number four, Personnel. Five officers below the rank of Sergeant left employment in March. As of March 31st, we were 100% staffed among correctional officer ranks. Our next academy has began in April. Two officers were promoted from CO1 to CO2. I want to congratulate Chris Sweeney, who was promoted to the rank of Captain. And congratulations and many thanks to Mike Root-Piper, who retired as our pretrial services administrator after 33 years of service to Douglas County. Enclosure number five, Population. There were 1,337 admissions and 1,338 releases. Our high count was 1,068, and our low count was 1,020. Our average daily population was 1,046, which coincidentally is exactly the same as the month before. Our population has been extremely stable from day to day, month to month, over the past several months. Our average length of stay for inmates who were released in March. The overall length of stay was 26.6 days. 46.6% of inmates stayed longer than 72 hours. The average length of stay for these inmates was 55.5 days. 53.4% of inmates were released within 72 hours of being booked, and the average length of stay for these inmates was 1.3 days. There were 80 custodial sanctioned bed days. The U.S. Marshal population decreased. The average daily felony pretrial population was 736, a decrease. The average daily misdemeanor pretrial population was 106, a decrease. Probation violations remain stable. 18% of our population were between the ages of 18 and 24. 64% of our population were minorities. 15% of our population were female, and 19% of our population were homeless or near homeless. And Commissioners, I've been working with DOTCOM to generate some new reports, which drill down much further into our demographics, and those should be ready for you for next month. Commissioner Kavanaugh, last week you had some questions about our contracts and the billing days. I do have some data on that. It's not included in your report, but I have it. You were curious about the number of bed days from different entities that, you were curious about the number of bed days from different entities that we have contracts with. The city of Omaha, for the 12 months ending on March 31st, the previous 12 months, the city of Omaha had 42,080 bed days. The U.S. Marshal Service had 31,323 days. And then everybody else combined had 1,253 days. So by far, it's the city, the U.S. Marshal Service, and then everybody else is pretty miniscule by comparison. Enclosure number six, Medical. There were 1,337 intake screenings, and there were 357 health and physical assessments. Inmates were sent out 31 times for emergent medical care, and seven of those were by 911. There were 13 hospital admissions, which resulted in 49 days of hospitalization, and there were 41 off-site medical appointments. Pretty busy month in terms of emergent healthcare issues for folks at the jail. Enclosure number seven, Mental Health. There were 144 initial psychiatric assessments, 462 initial mental health assessments. There were 107 individuals placed on suicide precautions. 191 individuals were placed on drug and alcohol withdrawal protocols. There were four referrals to the Board of Mental Health and four transfers to the Lincoln Regional Center. And in March, 48% of our population was diagnosed with a mental illness. Enclosure number eight, Security Operations and Honor Guard. Our crisis negotiation team was deployed four times, one in conjunction with our CERT team, two for severely mentally ill individuals who had been refusing to shower for basic hygiene, one for an individual who broke knobs off of a sink and was using them as weapons, and once for an individual who flooded his cell and was threatening self-harm. All of these incidents were resolved without injury or force. 10 new CNT members actually did just complete their training at the State's Crisis Negotiation Academy, and they graduated last Friday. Our CERT team was deployed four times for cell extractions and one for a search for high-risk contraband. There were 10 searches of housing units conducted. Minor contraband recovered included modified items for tattooing and nuisance items such as extra linen. Significant contraband included suspected illegal drugs, cash app information, which is believed to be utilized in financing criminal activity. Our Honor Guard was deployed on three occasions. Once, on an upbeat note, to march in the St. Patrick's Day Parade. They also provided services at the funerals of recently retired Sergeant Albert Bass and at the funeral of former Officer Bryce Hattery, who passed away in February. Enclosure nine, Staff Development, Wellness and Retention. 18 individuals were interviewed for correctional officer positions, and 80 applications were received. The Strategic Inmate Management, or SIM, change team was assembled and is meeting regularly with the representatives from the National Institute of Corrections to prepare for implementation of the SIM model later this year. Nine staff members utilized the Wellness and Retention Office for the first time. Five officers were referred to the peer support team, and three staff members were referred to external mental health resources. I do want, even though it'll appear on next month's report, because it did happen at the beginning of April, I did want to make note that we did lose an officer tragically in a car accident, Bridget Harlow. And I again was very proud of this particular portion of our department for coming together and rallying around the staff, who knew her well. Other noteworthy items. We actually did already hold two GED graduation ceremonies in April to commemorate the recent graduates, both in community corrections as well as the jail. Work continues on the planning of our mental health addition. It is hoped that groundbreaking will occur over the summer, followed by approximately two years of construction. And lastly, our medical contract is currently out for bid. We have hosted prospective vendors at a pre-proposal conference and posted answers to over 100 vendor questions. Proposals are due by May 8th, and we will select a vendor on June 20th, and our new contract will take effect on September 1st. I'm ready for your questions.
Thank you, Director Myers. Questions from Board members? Commissioner Kavanaugh.
Thanks for this. This'll come as a surprise. The average daily population, 1,046, same as last month. I don't know if I've seen that before, but that's good. That's a low number, and it's stabilized.
It is a fairly low number. Historically, go ahead. I'm sorry, Commissioner.
When we get to the lowest historical number, make sure that we know that.
Sure.
I think it's probably, I mean, in recent years.
During my time at Corrections, which spans 16 and a half years now, the lowest that I ever remember it was around 960.
Okay. Make sure that we...
Trust me, we will all know when we hit that.
Okay. So on page two, there's this average length of stay breakout, and one of them is 26.6 days, which, correct me if I'm wrong, is that the overall length of stay of the entire population?
It is.
Okay. Then, just below that, when we get to that 44.6 of inmates stay longer than 72 hours, then the subset of that is the average length of stay for these inmates was 55.5 days. Okay. So if that's the case for these days, does that mean everybody else is staying less than 72 hours?
Yes. The next bullet down, 53.4% of inmates were released within 72 hours. So basically, over half. We pick 72 hours as a kind of a line because that's where either you're gonna, the judge will have let you out at your first court appearance. If you got arrested on a Friday, you might stay close to 72 hours before you go to court. So either you had the money to bond out, or the judge lets you out. If none of those two things happen, then you're usually stuck with us for a while.
Okay. So if I'm reading this right, the average daily felony pretrial population was 736. So that's the bulk of our population?
Yes.
That's 70% of our population?
Correct.
They're awaiting trial in district court?
That's correct.
And they can't get out unbound?
That's, or at least they haven't thus far, yes.
Once they're adjudicated in district court, they pass on. They either leave the correction system, or they go to the penitentiary.
Yep, that is correct.
Okay. So 70% of these people are district court holds awaiting felony trials?
That's correct.
Okay. And that's pretty stable. That's been the case for a while.
It has been, yes.
This bed days income, and I appreciate this breakout, is interesting because, as we talked about last time, OPD pays a per diem, U.S. Marshals pays a slightly different per diem, and then the others are a collection of other per diems?
Yeah. We will be hopefully working on sort of standardizing that. These contracts were all put in place at different times, established with different costs.
Absolutely, I totally...
30 seconds.
So, and we may have to come back for a couple things, but the per diems on these three categories would be one thing that I would like, so that...
Sure.
You know, we can kind of do the math, and then we got a grand total of bed days income for the year. So when I come back, that'll be a topic that we'll talk about. And finally, there's some things in the thinking skills, identification skills.
Time.
We'll come back.
Thank you, Commissioner Kavanaugh. Commissioner Boyle.
So thank you for your report. Just a couple questions. One is the pretrial release program, I know, is relatively new. Do you have information on that? And also, it's really thinking about what the recidivism rate is for those folks.
This iteration of the pretrial release program is, you know, a year and a half old now. There's been pretrial release, which had a much lesser degree of supervision and services offered. That's existed for many years. In terms of recidivism on the new program, or the revamped program, I don't have that with me here. We can probably start looking at that fairly soon. You do need some time to elapse because you can look artificially good if you don't allow enough time for people actually to get in trouble again. And so I wouldn't, I wouldn't want to claim an artificially high success rate by kind of going outside of what would be considered a standard wait time before you start counting somebody in your good column.
When do you think would be a good time to start to track that?
You know, I will, I'll talk with Justine Wall, our Rehabilitative Services Administrator, about what kind of data we might be able to start to generate for you. Now, there may be some, may not be long-term recidivism, but maybe just success rates while on pretrial release.
Sure.
You know, that really is the purpose of the pretrial release supervision program. It's not necessarily to prevent recidivism in the long haul, though we hope that that's an outcome, but it's, are you going to court, and are you staying out of trouble until you go to court?
Yeah.
You know, that boils down to what pretrial services' mission is.
Okay. And then the second question I have is unrelated. Again, about almost 20% of the population is determined homeless?
Correct.
What's the disposition for those folks once they've been, they've gone through the system?
You know, they are one of our challenging subsets because, you know, if you look at the population statistics Commissioner Kavanaugh was asking me about, they are oftentimes in that 53.4% that were released within 72 hours, and the average length of stay for those people is 1.3 days. They're oftentimes, you know, I don't want to use the, well, minor crimes, trespassings, things of that nature. So it is, they go to court and they're released. So sometimes it is, there is some degree of difficulty in activating services or interventions for them and making connections to the community for them in that short amount of time.
One minute.
We do, I mean, actually, kind of in ongoing talks with Fiona Francis House to kind of build some partnerships and some shared programs with them. So that is a, you know, I'm not saying we can't do anything. It's difficult with this population.
Yep, yep. So that's actually why I asked. I think that that would be a difficult population, so it's, I don't see how to, aside from developing those relationships, and it has to be more, probably more formal, because I think for them, for those facilities to accept someone who is recently in jail can be challenging too.
Sure.
So I think that's why I brought it up, because I just see that as a perpetual problem.
Unfortunately, it is a lot of repeat folks.
All right, thank you.
Okay, thank you. Commissioner Rogers.
Mr. Chair, Mike, I'm just, you know, just curious, what's your plans for Root-Piper's position?
So we just filled that this month. Tyrone Harper was selected, so that'll be included in next month's report. And then we are looking at the position and the duties that Tyrone had before he was promoted to kind of revamp that because the program has changed.
Okay.
So, yeah, Tyrone Harper, I guess, will be formally announced next month.
Okay, thanks.
Thank you, Commissioner Rogers. And Commissioner Kavanaugh.
Thank you. Just to recap real quick, in addition to the average daily population, which is stable, and the average length of stay, which is 26.6 days, the minority population is at 64%, with black population representing 43.9, Hispanics 13.7, Native Americans 3.5, Asians 1.9, and the balance are whites. So that bed day income thing, I don't expect you to have it off the top of your head, but if we get some idea, because that plays into, you know, the outside money that comes into the correction center, and it's not a big percentage of your overall budget, but it is something. And so if we could get that, and then an idea of, we talked about this last time, what OPDs is, what the U.S. Marshal is, what SARP and others. From the federal point of view, does the U.S. Marshal and ICE, the immigration people, pay the same?
So we no longer have a contract with ICE, so I can't answer that question, but...
That's fine, if we don't, we don't.
Yeah, we don't.
So the U.S. Marshal is the only federal hold that we have?
Correct. Yep. Yes, that's correct. And they're 120 a day currently.
Well, I mean, these are substantial bed days. I mean, 42,000 bed days and 31,000 bed days, that's a ton of bed days.
Correct.
So if we could get some idea of the fiscal impact of that...
I can bring that to you for the next month's report.
Okay. And I've asked this before, and it's more of a reflection upon my thinking skills than the reports, but on page 17, when we're, you know, outlining some of these programs that we offer, under this, we have thinking skills, and there's no progress, partially completed and completed. Just briefly, what are thinking skills?
So these are basically, they're people who've, we've enrolled in cognitive behavioral programming, so there are groups that last, you know, anywhere five to six weeks in length. So they're basically group cognitive therapy, cognitive behavioral therapy classes.
And on the next page, page 18, we have identification. What does that entail?
That just means we've identified individuals who need IDs and a driver's license, social security card, et cetera, documents that you would need to work or rent. And you can see that's, that is something that's more difficult for us to make progress on, as you can see, a lot of those, unfortunately, there's, you know, some of those months, there's very, there's the number for no progress is much higher than the people who...
One minute.
Been able to get to the...
And finally, on 19, Substance Abuse. It says, and on page 23, Substance Abuse Disorder Evaluations, 64 year-to-date. It seems to me that we would have a significant, larger subset of people with substance abuse disorders than 64.
So getting those formal evaluations, I did reference that there was a disruption in payment for those, and it actually had to do with Medicaid expansion and a kind of a, it left them on the rolls for Medicaid while they were, but Medicaid doesn't pay where they're incarcerated. And Region Six can't pay because they were left on the rolls for Medicaid. So we had this, it was just really a technicality that the state had to correct, and it took several months for them to correct it. So I would look for those numbers to increase.
Thank you for this. Time, thank you. Thank you, Commissioner Kavanaugh. And any other questions? Oh, sorry, Commissioner Borgeson.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Mike, on the long-term psychiatric facility, the Lincoln Regional Center, you said four incarcerated folks were transferred there. Do you know how long the wait period was for those four to be transferred?
I don't know on those specific, those four. I can tell you, they actually have made some headway. It's gotten better. The wait times have improved some. There still is, it's still too long, but they have made some progress. But I can, I will find out the answer to that question for you.
And if you, I mean, I think it would be interesting to, again, have a chart of that particular one?
Yep.
Because we can, you know, obviously keep pushing...
Absolutely.
...for things to move quicker in that regard.
I do know we've had, we've had, there is just, we do a whiteboard with our medical team every week to kind of go over our top mental and physical health concerns throughout the jail. And one of that's, the people who are on the list are on that, so I'll be able to get that information. I know we're the... I know there's somebody who's been on list for almost a year, you know, and I think they keep getting pushed down because they're, I don't know what sort of formula they come up with to try and put people on the list and bump people up and down. But there are some times that people do end up waiting for a very long, extensive time.
Yeah. Well, those are conversations that I think would be good to continue to have, but that data would be important to have to back that up.
Absolutely.
Thanks.
Thank you, Commissioner Borgeson. Any other comments or questions from board members? Seeing none, are there comments and questions from the public? Seeing none? We do, yeah, we do not have a need for executive session. I do have a motion to adjourn from Commissioner Rogers. Is there a second?
Second.
Second from Commissioner Morgan. Please vote.
Motion passes six to zero.
Thank you, Mr. Clerk. We will now commence our Board of Commissioners meeting. Roll call, please.
Commissioner Borgeson.
President.
Commissioner Boyle.
Here.
Commissioner Kavanaugh. Commissioner Garcia is absent. Commissioner Morgan. Commissioner Rogers. Mr. Chair.
Here. Okay. Minutes and claims. The first item of business are items 1A and 1B. 1A is approval of minutes of the Board of Commissioners meeting held April, or excuse me, Tuesday, April 16th, 2024. Item B is approval of claims submitted for payment process through Tuesday, April 23rd, 2024. Complete listing is on file in the office of the county clerk and comptroller and available on the Douglas County Clerk and Comptroller's webpage. Motion for approval by Commissioner Morgan, second by Commissioner Rogers. Please vote.
Motion passes six to zero.
Thank you, Mr. Clerk. Next item is the consent agenda. Our consent agenda with items A through J. Yes, Commissioner Rogers?
Pull item B to ask some questions separately.
Motion to pull, motion, do I need a motion to pull item B?
No.
All right.
I'll make a motion to approve consent agenda minus item B.
Second. Motion to approve consent agenda minus item B by Commissioner Rogers, second by Commissioner Morgan.
Commissioner Friend, I apologize for interrupting. Teresa Yurk. And I'm on Catherine's mic because my mic's not working, so that might look strange on your.
I forgot.
No, 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 not at all. Just if I may, for the record and for this board, there's a number of items on the consent agenda that were teed up for signature by the chair, but the vice chair is running the meeting. And so that the public is aware, we will be amending that to say vice chair on any of those documents to appropriately document the correct signature. That's all.
Thank you, Teresa. That was her way of reprimanding me, if you guys were curious. I do have a, Commissioner Borgeson?
Yeah, I don't need this pulled. I just wondered if there could be an explanation as to, on item C, the grant review committee said not applicable. So does that mean there's no grant dollars that are going to be awarded to offset the cost of item C?
Patrick?
That might be due to the fact that there's no personnel. If there's no personnel involved, we're not bringing things before the grant review committee. So if there is person, if there's, if it involves the funding of personnel, it should go before the grant review committee. If it doesn't involve that, then it should go straight to the board. And the board can make a decision on it.
Okay, but in the resolution, it says that the 95,000 plus was earmarked to offset wages and benefits of sworn and non-s sworn persons.
Then I don't know why it's not before the grant review committee. I don't know if there's, is there somebody from that office that can speak to it, from the sheriff's office?
Yes, Commissioner Rogers?
And answers that. I just wanted to note, if I could just ask for unanimous consent, I forgot to ask for I-7 to be pulled off to vote separately because I have to abstain. So everybody's fine with it. I'd just like to be added, to be pulled.
Okay, so item B and item I-7.
Thank you.
To be pulled from consent. Chief?
Good morning, Chief Will Nimmack, Chief Deputy of Operations for Sheriff's Office. Specifically to that grant, I don't, that's Chief Rinn's purview under the administrative corps.
It is.
So I don't, I do not have any specific information on that, so I apologize. But I don't know if there's any specific questions I could answer in relation to that. But that is, and he is, currently the sheriff is in a separate meeting, and Chief Rinn is in a separate meeting. So they both apologize for not being able to be here this morning.
I guess what I'm trying to, to find out is, are we getting the 95,000 to offset the cost of whatever this grant is for?
Yes. Yes, that is my understanding. Yes.
Okay. So it didn't go through the committee, for whatever reason, to be approved? So, but the grant itself is going to give us dollars to offset the cost of?
Personnel, I believe. Yes. That is correct.
Okay. All right.
To my limited understanding. Okay. And I'll be happy to speak to item B whenever you have questions on that. Thank you.
Okay. Thank you, Chief. I refresh my memory. We have a motion and a second. Motion by?
Commissioner Morgan, second by Commissioner Rogers to approve the consent agenda less B and I-7.
Okay. And please vote.
Motion passes six to zero.
Larry, did you wish to speak on item B?
Yes, Larry Store, 5015 Lafayette Avenue, Omaha, 68132. I wasn't real sure what item you were speaking on because you're either not speaking into the microphones or he's not got the volumes turned up. B, C, or D, it was hard to tell, but I understand, I just found out because nobody really talks about it, that Governor Pillen did sign a new Open Meetings Act. And I want to maintain that this item is not clarified enough for a citizen to understand it.
You're talking about item B, right?
Are you talking about B or D, C or, B, C, or D?
And you're saying they're not clear enough?
I'm sorry?
Please continue. Sorry.
Okay. Regardless, it does not tell a citizen what it is about. And the requirements are definitely reasonable explanations of what the topic is. Well, what is this about? Now, according to the new interpretations written up in the Omaha, I'm sorry, the Fremont Tribune. I'm going to submit this for the record. It's quite apparent that an awful lot of citizens, board people, city council people, and even lawyers do not understand the language of the Open Meetings Act. Now, reading that article, for example, and this is why I say this needs to be openly discussed, not shutting us off so that, I don't care if the lawyers say that you cannot respond to us. When you want to, you will, regardless of this situation. You usually do. I watched the January 3rd, or January 23rd meeting where you all went off on this and how it's intended to keep the citizens shut up. It is not. You have to understand it from a citizen's viewpoint. So I'm once again protesting a lack of information for a citizen. And the use of consent agendas where we can't talk about it unless you pull the item, and if you do, and we comment about it or something else, then you go off on the citizens. It's not the citizens that are at fault.
Commissioner Morgan?
Larry, I'd like to respond to you, and I want my colleagues to correct me if I state this incorrectly. Any item on the agenda that you come before us and raise a question about, this board and that any commissioner can respond to you and have discussion back and forth. If we want to ask you a question about an item on the agenda that you bring up a matter on, we can respond and have an exchange respectfully. Period.
Respectfully, sir. Even in that article.
Larry, you're not at the microphone. You're not at the microphone. Thank you, Commissioner Morgan. I wanted to make a, I wanted to make a point. Larry, the reason I let you go on, on specifically B, was because I neglected to actually let you speak before we voted on consent. You should have been able to speak on consent in general, and I dropped the ball on that. The reason I let you go on when we were dealing with B is because I made a mistake. You can speak to us about any of the items on this agenda. That was my mistake. So, so anyway, I would have shut you off because you weren't talking about item B, but my mistake allowed you to go for four and a half minutes. So we're a very open board and we respect your input, but just put that in context. So that was on me.
May I respond just briefly?
No, because you're.
For clarification.
No, you may not. Not at this point. Oh, yes, Commissioner Kavanaugh?
Sorry. I had a light on earlier, and then when Chris asked for B to be pulled, I thought he was going to address B, and then this thing came up. I actually had a question on B, and I looked at the background things because I hate acronyms. They don't tell you anything. And when I see stuff like ALPR, and we're approving ALPR, I naturally, like most people say, well, what the heck's ALPR? So I pulled the background documentation on this $52,000 contract for FLOC's ALPR for investigative services, and I communicated with the sheriff's office. ALPR is Auto License Plate Reader. And this is something new, I mean, new-ish, where you run a red light, and the red light actually has a camera on it, takes a picture of your license plate, and you're issued a ticket. This has actually happened to me, not in Omaha, in Council Bluffs, which is, I think, ahead of Omaha for ALPR purposes. And, you know, Larry, you have a perfect right to speak on anything on this agenda. As far as I'm concerned, that's your constitutional free speech right. If that's what you were curious about, so was I. And it happens all the time when we get these acronyms. And I wanted to make a specific explanation of this because if the folks out there in the listening audience are reading this, they don't have access to what we have access to, and they might ask, what is ALPR? So that's what ALPR does. That's what it does. I'm not happy about the time I got nicked, but I did pay my ticket. I was impressed that the technology was there that could actually get people. So that's all I was going to say on this item, but it was more for clarifying it for the public than anything else. Thank you.
Thank you, Commissioner Kavanaugh. Commissioner Rogers?
And I'm sorry, Will, I addressed you as captain. I meant deputy.
Oh, that's not a problem.
So I just want to make sure. So we've had this, because I remember before it coming, and it was a pilot, right?
Yes.
Okay. How long was the pilot?
One year.
And this commits us to, was it two years with four years, one-year extensions?
This expenditure would commit us to one year.
One year.
One further year. Yes.
Four one-year extensions?
Yes.
Okay. So my question is, who owns this? Meaning, like in the resolution, it says, whereas Douglas County desires to enter into an annual subscription with FLOC Safety, and the cost of the annual subscription is 52,000. Then it says, in the first page of the master service agreement, the master service agreement, this agreement is entered into by and between FLOC Group, Inc., with a place of business, nosed the address, Atlanta, Georgia, and the entity identified in the signature block. And the signature block is, think the chair. And then there's another point where it says, authorized user means any individual employee, agent, or contractor of customer access or using the services under the rights granted to the customer. So the resolution notes Douglas County, the chair's got to sign it. I mean, who, my question, I don't know if this is you, who owns this?
The, so two answers there. First, the hardware, actually FLOC Safety, Inc. owns the hardware. So if it were to be damaged, not working, inoperable, they would be responsible for replacing that item. It's their item. But as far as the data that those license plate readers obtain, that's owned by the sheriff's office.
So, okay, let me define ownership then. So for instance, if, I mean, if, does the board own this or the sheriff's office own this? Meaning if the board as a whole had discontent with the contract, does the board own it whether the board cancels this contract? And saying we wouldn't do it without conversation with the sheriff's office. But I'm wondering who technically owns it?
Teresa York County Attorney's Office. Usually it's the county. That's why it's here before the board for the purchase. Usually it's the county on behalf of the individual department that enters into an agreement to spend money.
So, yeah, I just wanted to make sure on the record, the contract is with the county, not the agency. And I just want my, I want this question to clarify who has jurisdiction.
Well, I'll speak to the sheriff's office perspective of the contract. It is a contract with the sheriff's office of which, because of the amount of the contract, the 52,000, would require the, basically the process to be followed through the county to get the proper signatures in place for that level of expenditure.
No, I understand, but there is for reasons, I want to make sure, this is the county board. This is the county's contract, not the sheriff's. So that's why I want somebody to give me the answer to.
Well, if.
Because, yeah, no, sure, but the decisions for it, the ultimate decision for it is made by the county board. Because, like I said, it's in this deal. The county board desires to enter into an annual subscription.
Well, and Commissioner Rogers, if I might, according to the agenda item, the agreement for the Douglas County Sheriff's Office to purchase those, the devil's in the details.
Yeah.
It's budgeted at $52,000. So what you're asking is, does it fall under the sheriff's office budget? Or is it something that we actually technically have to approve?
No, no. I know we got to prove because of the cost. But I mean, after this happens. No, no. I know we got to approve because of the cost, but, I mean, after this happens, I don't want there to be confusion, because it says, like it says, it says in the resolution, the county board enters into it. But clearly, in statement one, it says the agreement is entered into with the customer, and then it states the signature block, which is the sheriff's. Now, like I said, if something ever happens, it's going to be in some consulting, but I just want to make sure. I don't know who owns this.
One minute. Are we a minute over? All right.
It is a budgeted item for the sheriff's office.
Sorry, are there any...yes, I think Teresa's light is on.
It is, if I may. Teresa here, County Attorney's Office. So, generally, the county board of the purchasing agent can execute contracts on behalf of departments. Normally, departments do not execute contracts on their own. I think we've got a couple of different things running, and one is the Purchasing Act, and we're talking about the dollar value of the contract, and there are some different requirements depending on how much the contract is for. But generally, that's why this board sees contracts coming to them. I don't recall this board generally not doing a contract if it was in the budget for a department, nor do I recall generally this board cancelling a contract for a department that was in their budget. That hasn't been the past practice, but the idea that having it come before the board is, is it was Purchasing Act issue.
Okay. Thank you, Teresa. And Commissioner Borgeson?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Thank you. So, can you tell me, you said that we did this as a pilot for a year? And do we get the results of that in any way? I mean, what was the, I guess, what were the results of that pilot?
Sure.
But then, I'm not understanding, when this says automatic license plate reader, where are these located?
Sure.
I mean, if the city of Omaha, if I'm reading this right, the city of Omaha doesn't even use this technology, and Sarpy County, Council Bluffs, Carter Lake, Carney, North Platte, South Sioux City, West Des Moines, we would have access to their data because they currently use it, but Omaha doesn't.
They, well, a lot of questions in there. I'll try to answer them, and if I don't hit one, just remind me. So, the license plate reader data of Flock, other partners of Flock currently were partners with 312 other agencies, many of which are in Nebraska. You named a few. Lexington, Gothenburg, Carney, a lot of the I-80 corridor agencies are connected within that system. All that data is shared to that specific agency's desire to share it. To date, every agency is sharing that information. The actual hardware, in terms of where it's at, where they're located at, is all within the county. So, and unlike Commissioner Kavanaugh's experience, they're not located on traffic lights. They're not automated for any type of automatic traffic ticket purpose or anything like that. They are designed for an investigative tool. The use of them, it's very regulated and audited in terms of the product of which you speak. Yes, there is a, we retain 30 days of data, and unless it's used by a criminal investigation within that 30 days, it's purged. So, there is no, like, going back a year or something like that, or six months to determine, unless a particular plate is involved in a criminal, basically, investigation or criminal type of query. Those queries require a report, basically, like a case report. So, an officer, and only sworn officers or deputies are allowed to make a query, to basically search for a plate or search the database for information. So, it takes a...
But where are they? I mean, go back. Where are these in the county? Not the other jurisdictional...
Sure.
...or whatever. Where in the county?
One minute.
They are located at various locations along Swanson Highway within the county jurisdiction, all primary county jurisdictional areas, and numerous other areas. I can provide you the specific locations of each, because they're, we had 25 during the pilot, and this, we will actually have 18 deployed. And some of those locations will change. 18 total deployed moving forward. We had 20...
In addition to the 25?
No, we had 25 during the pilot. We're going to scale down to 18.
Well, if you could get me the list of where these are...
I will do that, for sure. Yeah. And they're all on public roadways, the right-of-way, basically, having, the sheriff's office having, basically, the ability to put them where they're at. And then, also, as far as the city of Omaha, they are coming, up to my understanding, with the use of LPR technology. So, that is evolving.
Time.
I'll come back.
Commissioner Kavanaugh?
Thanks for this. So, you answered one of my questions. There's going to be 18 under this contract. Are they mobile? Would you move them around from different locations?
Of the 18, 16 are planned to be stationary, in that they're mounted on a pole. They run off of solar energy. And two, what we plan is to have on our, the ability to be flexible, to be mobile, to, if we had a particular hotspot or need for a particular area, that we could move it to that location.
Okay. Not for traffic control, not for running a red light, not for speeding?
No.
But for criminal investigation?
Yes.
If I read this correctly, then what we get from the vendor is a 30-day window to review video taken by these 18 cameras. If something happened, if there was a holdup, if there was a burglary, if there was an assault or something, we'd have 30 days to go to wherever that camera was and review to see if there's anything pertinent to that incident on that camera.
Yes, it's not a continuous video roll. What it does is it captures pictures of, identifies vehicles and plates, or license plates. And if a vehicle does not have a license plate, it can identify particular identifiers off that vehicle. Let's say, as an example, a sticker on the back window, and that you know that your suspect vehicle had no plates, but in transit or something like that. You can search for those parameters.
During this pilot program, was any of the captured video used as exhibits in criminal prosecutions?
Yes, we had extreme amount of success during that one-year period, both with crimes of violence, to include Omaha-related cases relating to murder, in relation to the sheriff's office-related cases of assault, felony assaults, all the way to property crimes, of which we've solved cases that, quite frankly, we would not have been able to solve without that tool.
I appreciate that, because that's kind of where the rubber meets the road on this. That's what you're trying to do. And it would be helpful, I don't imagine that you have this off the top of your head, if we had some idea of, this was used successfully in the prosecution of X number of assaults, or X number of robberies, or whatever, because it actually justifies the expense. It's an investigative tool, like fingerprints would be, like the camera in the shop would be, you know, at 7-Eleven or something like that.
Yes.
If you could, during this pilot period, compile what this actually did, we know, it would probably help us going forward, you know?
I can present you with that information. We have, basically, a tabulation of that. I don't know it off the top of my head, but we have tabulated those results.
Sure.
One minute.
I think, you know, this is something that's widely used currently in local law enforcement?
Yes. Nebraska is somewhat in the infancy of the use of LPR. It's prevalent, more prevalent in other states, but you're seeing a lot of agencies move to leverage that as an investigative tool, yes.
Good. So, would you have the capacity at the sheriff's office headquarters to review these things? Say, a robbery happened at 212th and Fort, and you had one there. Do you have somebody at the sheriff's office at 156th Street that can review the time from that camera remotely at the sheriff's office?
Every sworn member can review that in real time, yes.
And you have that capacity?
Yes, yes.
Okay. Thank you.
Yes, thank you.
Thank you, Commissioner Kavanaugh. Commissioner Rogers?
Mr. Chair, so, I just want to, inside conversation with the county attorney, I'm comfortable enough that the county board kind of owns it, because it's authorized it, and the sheriff's office is exercising it. So, I got a reason for that question, but it's done. I guess what my question is, since we're authorizing it, can we, or whoever wants to get a, on the list from you all, to get a copy of the reports that you all have to send to the crime commission?
Yes, yes.
Tell me this, what is a, is a manual query, from my understanding in the law, a manual query is, the license plate reader is taking stuff, keeping it, but a manual query is, it keeps track of, and you all got to report, a specific officer goes into the system and goes looking for something. That is tracked, just like a, when you're in a hospital, and somebody shouldn't be looking at some medical records, they look at it, it is tracked. So, you know who's looking at this, so it can go back if anything happens?
Yes, that is correct.
Okay, and you got to report that somewhere?
Yes.
Okay. So, the city of Omaha is not a part of it?
Not of this project, no.
What happens if it picks up information on a borderline, it's not in the county, but it's in the city of Omaha? What do you all have to do with that?
Where our cameras are located, or the LPR cameras are located, they don't pick up information in the city. They're all in the county.
Okay. So, can you all just send me a copy of the policy you had to do for it and the privacy piece?
Yes, and I'll also send, basically, locations and any other, like, cumulative result data that we've had during that pilot program.
Okay, thanks.
You betcha.
Okay, thank you. Thank you, Commissioner Rogers. Commissioner Borgeson?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. And piggybacking on that, but again, 18 of them, I'd like to know where those are, or where even the 25 were.
Sure, I can provide both.
I guess I'm questioning, why would we go down to 18? Is it because those didn't pick up anything, or cost?
Primarily cost, is try to rein in as best we could, kind of leverage both, the want and the need, and find that happy middle ground. Of the locations, they're concentrated on, basically, are criminal hotspots, if you will, of areas that would have more prevalent, you know, past-reported, you know, criminal incidents. And so, of the 25, 25 are offered to the sheriff's office, so we took full advantage of 25. And then, through that year, we kind of learned where, essentially, we could get the most product for the cost. And so, that's what, and kind of the reason of moving down to 18.
And you said, none of these are going to be in other jurisdictions? It's all going to be in unincorporated Douglas County?
Yes, of the 18, they're in unincorporated Douglas County. The state recently has changed their viewpoint on LPRs. There is a state permit process that would, if a law enforcement agency is interested in having an automated license plate reader on a state right-of-way, there is a permit process for that. But to date, what we're planning on is keep it within the county.
And in the agreement, this master services agreement, it states that the date of January 11th, 2024, have, what does that mean? That we've already been utilizing these, and now we're just approving the expenditure, or?
The, of the 25 that are mounted or installed currently, the ones, the locations that do not change are still working, yes. And because they won't be new units, they won't be reinstalled, they'll just basically use the same unit that's already there. The remainder are either in the process of being dismantled or already dismantled, taken down.
And I guess I would feel more comfortable approving this if we had, I guess, more information about, one, what the results of your pilot were.
Yeah, it was extensive, and I can provide you all that information, but it was an extensive, positive impact for the community in the respect that there were hundreds of thousands of dollars on the property crime side of things, basically, cases solved that resulted in victims, companies, and otherwise, receiving their, you know, products, stolen items back. It's been a very powerful investigative tool for stolen vehicles, which has been a recent kind of plague locally. And then, like I say, on the violent crime side of things, we had the opportunity to use this technology to get a murder suspect in custody within four minutes of it being reported to law enforcement.
Well, I think, for me, anyway, and, I mean, I don't know about timing, laying this over, but I'll abstain until we see the report and where these are actually going to be.
Yeah.
Time. Thank you. Thank you, Commissioner Borgeson. Commissioner Morgan?
I'd make a motion that we go ahead and approve it. I know it's being used nationally pretty effectively in other places, and I think, you know, with what you've said, I think it's been helpful tool here, too. So, I'd make that motion to go ahead and approve it.
Thank you.
On item B, motion by Commissioner Morgan, a second by Commissioner Kavanaugh. Any more discussion from board members on this item? Any other discussion from the public in in the chamber right now? We see you, Luis.
Good morning, commissioners. Very interesting topic. The concern that I have...
Jaquila, can you identify yourself? Can you identify yourself, please?
Yes. Jaquila Yarborough, sorry, 2417 Birdette Street, Omaha, Nebraska, 68111. Data scientist today in this position. Couple of red flags, just from this conversation that I'm hearing, and not a bad thing, but just some points of contention that should be considered before you enter an agreement, would be data governance. Data governance controls the, dictates the who's who, who has access to this data. How will this data be used? How will it be stored? Is the technology, how accurate is that technology? A few points that I just took down off the top of my head are data accuracy, data accessibility, data consistency, data compliance, data integrity, stewardship, and transparency. So, in the data world, what that means is, we are essentially collecting a lot of data with this technology, and the plan is not really spelled out where it will be housed. We call that data warehousing. The most important part of that is cybersecurity. If, long story short, if we, as a county, who essentially will be approving this, or it sounds like we have approved it, if we essentially don't have a data governance plan, it leaves us highly vulnerable to cyber attacks and multiple lawsuits. Additionally, just the vulnerability of our data and our information. Will it eventually be monetized? If the county has access to those reports, how long will they be, or that technology, where will it be stored? Does the county have a particular data warehouse that will essentially store that data? For how long? Have we developed any internal policy to dictate what we will essentially do with the data that we've collected? Will it be used to advance any type of preventative measures that we take in Douglas County? All of that is a part of data governance, and should be greatly considered, because it begins to become costly over time. So, that's all I have.
Thank you, Jaquila. Larry, I'm sorry you already spoke to this item B on one occasion, so I can't let you speak to this particular item.
I don't think Zach said anything about that, but you opened it up. So, I'd like to respond, or...
You got a chance to speak to item B, and you also got a chance to speak to the consent. You did get a chance to speak to the consent agenda, based on my ruling. Any other items or discussion from public? Seeing none, I do have a motion and a second on item B?
Discussion.
Oh, Luis, I'm sorry. Luis, go ahead, please.
Thanks.
Thank you.
This is working out with technology. I want to just voice that...
Luis, can you identify yourself, please?
2709 Dewey Avenue, Mr. Jim Venice. The LPR, I think, is important for justice. The LPR doesn't monitor people. It monitors license plates, and if there... And if there is criminal activity, this helps to provide information, so it, it could, LPRs can prove, like if you're guilty or innocent. So it, it's not this, it's not incriminating. This is what, what the, the monitoring provides. And I think that's important, because if you're victimized, people are going to be like, well, why wasn't the county doing more? When you're a victim, you expect justice to be served. And if thi- this helps the victim, that's great. Abuse of this, I don't, I don't, I don't think there's going to be any abuse of this information to frame somebody. It, you know, I, I have a vehicle and I'm not worried about my plates. Somebody in the neighborhood can see my plates, and they're probably monitoring the neighborhood better than a camera. But really, why I'm supporting this is because of the, the victim viewpoint. The victim wants justice served, and if the monitoring helps with it, that's really what we should be gravitating towards. All, all other considerations are important, but the, the pilot program and the service provider already said that this is for thirty days. We maintain the information for thirty days, they said, and, you know, maybe that's not enough time for investigation, but at least they are following other considerations besides trying to prove their case. Thank you.
Thank you, Louise. Are there any other comments from public? Anyone on Zoom? Seeing none, Commissioner Kavanaugh, you had a point?
Yeah, just one quick question for our county attorney. Following up on what Ms. Yarborough and some of the others have raised here and some of our colleagues, these items, in addition to being used by the sheriff's office and the county attorney and prosecution, these items would be discoverable by defendants as well, isn't that right?
Tracy, your county attorney's office, if it was used in a criminal case, sure, absolutely, yeah.
So, you know, it could be used to incriminate you if it's evidenced by the prosecution. It could be used as exculpatory evidence by the defendant as well. So, you know, if you're talking about both sides of the justice scales, they'd both be able to use this in their case, right?
Yes.
Right, thank you. That's good.
Thank you, Commissioner. Commissioner Boyle.
Yeah, I just have one quick comment. I'm probably, I completely agree with the use of this. At the same time, I think I'm going to abstain really because of information that Ms. Yarborough brought up in addition to Commissioner Rogers. It's, it's, this really has to do with the idea of the HIPAA component in hospitals. Everybody knows HIPAA exists, and as medical professionals, we need to stay, stay in line with only accessing patients' charts that we are taking, that we're taking care of or who we may be asked to look at. At the same time, it's not, it does happen where people go in other people's charts. So my concern is that sworn members of, of the sheriff's office would, you know, maybe they're having, they want to follow an old girlfriend or something like that. Not to say that they don't have high morals and standards, but they're human and those things can happen. So I would want, before voting for this, some type of assurance that those types of events are, are tracked closely, monitored, and, and we can ensure that the, the people who are just driving to their friend's house aren't going to be, without committing any crime, aren't going to be followed by a, by, or tracked on, on this type of system. So can I get that type of assurance before voting for it?
Yes, I will provide basically a synopsis of locations, productivity, the protection set in place, much to the earlier point, the, the CEGIS-related electronic component of how it's protected, how that data is ensured to be secured, all those levels, yes. But to your point, in terms of its protections among the users, that's, there are safeguards within the place, in place to require an actual case number, which makes it, that audit function, you know, very quick and easy to determine if there was any ill use of it. And to date, we've had zero instances of, of improper use.
So there's a, a case number, and then is there a way to ensure that only those, those people who are working on the case that are accessing it, too?
No, because some of the case numbers involve, let's say, you know, sheriff's office cases. Some of them involve, let's say, Omaha cases, as every example, a stolen vehicle. A vehicle may be stolen out of city jurisdiction, but be seen in county jurisdiction, traveling down a road. And so that particular case number would be an outside agency report number, but referenced to that specific vehicle.
Okay, and then the, the person is assigned to track that.
One minute.
Would, there's only a limited number of people that are assigned to track that?
Well, it's limited to the users, of which are all sworn members within the sheriff's office. And so that particular user may be working patrol, or they may be working investigations. We have a lot of different assignments. They are all available to use it, but all required to use those same, you know, case number type of requirements to actually, you know, make a query.
So there's not a way to make a query where you just enter in somebody's license plate number?
No, it, it requires that case number, too, yes.
Case number, too, so they have to have a case?
Yes, yes.
Okay, that's reassuring.
Thank you.
Thanks.
Thank you, Commissioner, and thank you, Chief.
Commissioner Front, Tracy, your county attorney's office, can I piggyback on what Will said, if I may? I believe also statutorily for a manual query, there, it's required that you document a reason. And I think, it's been a while, but I do recall reading the policy from the sheriff's office a while back, and they do have that in the policy. So you, you couldn't enter per statute and policy, you'd have to have a documented reason on why you were looking for a specific manual query.
Yes.
Okay, thank you. Commissioner Rogers, I think. Okay. Commissioner Borgeson, you're next. This is your third time.
Thank you, Mr. Chair, and I just wanted to also piggyback on that exact same. So what, I guess the meaning of case would be, one, and then, two, if totally sure that no one can input someone's license plate to target or follow someone that they have an angst with.
Well, a case number first and foremost is, is a report number for a, an incident reported to the sheriff's office or another law enforcement agency. So each, each alphanumeric usually, and unique to that particular incident. So whether it be a stolen vehicle, or an assault, burglary, or theft, every agency that takes crime reports assigns it a case number, report number, it can be synonymous with, with that. And in terms of like ill use or the potential for that, you can never eliminate, it's human nature. You know, we're dealing, this is a human-related business, everything is. And so there's no way to essentially preclude someone from using something wrong. But there are always safeguards within each system to ensure that there is a way to discover if, if a use of it was incorrect. Much to the same, law enforcement officers have access to extremely valuable database called in CEGIS, has everything from DMV to other information. In that same manner, an officer that has, let's say, ill intent or, or a way to try to leverage information they shouldn't be privy to or shouldn't have a connection to a criminal case with, in that same way, they could find that information. But that query or that, those searches would be discoverable through audit and have been over time. If someone's searching for, I've seen examples there where someone famous gets arrested, notable person, that officer will essentially search for that, that's discovered through an audit. There's no connection to why they're searching for that information, and so then there's, there's punitive damages there.
Actually, that's time, yeah, we're a little, we're a little over. That's time. Commissioner Rogers, I think you were next, and this is your third time.
Thank you, Mr. Chair, I just wanted to add on a, a new piece to that, and that's, that's a little bit where my query was going, because I, I mean, to the board. That's why I asked the deputy chief for those policies, and I'm hoping now you just send to all the board, the policy, the privacy policy, because it's also in law that, you know, there's a report annually that has to go to the Crime Commission. And in that report, it has to include the name of each list against which captured plate data was checked, the number of manually entered license plate numbers. And they have, you know, and some, and some other, and relevant things under that. So I think, you know, that was kind of the basis of my question of, does the board own this? Because if we have authorizing power, if we're able to get these reports and it's not meeting standard, you know, the board has that accountability factor. So, you know, I'm fine with proving it, being able to get that information and have the other accountability piece.
For sure, thank you.
Thank you, Commissioner, and thank you, Chief. Any other comments from board members? I, I'll only add, I haven't, I haven't spoken to this, and I'm sure you guys are really excited the fact that I'm sitting here, because I haven't hardly said a word. I mean, it's got to be refreshing, except to Larry, it's probably not that refreshing to you. I can add, I can add something in here, and I, and I think it may make a difference, it may not. I hear reticence or hesitancy, but this is, this pilot actually showed us what this product could do and what we can deal with. And I, I don't think that we've had any glaring issues and anything that's indicated to us that it's extraordinarily problematic, or it could create problems. In an IT environment, in a business environment, in, in all of these environments, we all know that you put pilots in place, you put things in place to actually see how these things work. And it was pretty prominent. It wasn't on consent, maybe necessarily to hide it or sweep it through or push it through in a rapid manner, don't know. But I don't think we're, my point is, I don't think we're reinventing the wheel here. There, the, there are, there are, there's utilization all over the country, and there's utilization here. But the questions have been pertinent and appropriate. I'm just going to vote in the affirmative, and I think that that's all I had at this point. Again, any other questions from Commissioners at this point?
Mr. Chair, before we get to the vote, can I make three, three notes? I can wait till we're to that point, but just wanted to make sure you're aware.
You can make three notes now.
All right, thank you. So Dan Ash, Douglas County Clerk, I just need to correct something for the previous item we voted on, less, so it was a consent agenda, less B, and I seven, I had announced that Commissioner Morgan made the motion, and Commissioner Rogers made the second, and it was the other way around. Commissioner Rogers made the motion, Commissioner Morgan made the second. On this item, item B, there was just a comment made that, you know, Commissioners had access information, the public didn't. And I just wanted to go over the, the public, what they do have, how they could find, like for this specific item, if they wanted to find the agreement, on the county's Agenda's webpage, which you can get through, through the Douglas County Clerk's website, douglascountyclerk.org, or through the county's main website, douglascounty-ene.gov. You can get to the Agenda's webpage, and with each, with each item, there's a see attached link. And if you click on it, it will show everything that's going before you all to approve. And then for those who are here in person, we do have a container on the front desk that has hard copies of each item that are being approved. And if someone in attendance wanted their own hard copy or, or watching, they could just get a, contact the clerk's office, and we can get that for them. And then, just, it was brought to my attention, Commissioner Boyle was one of them. On the very top of this item, there was, there is actually two misspellings that the clerk's office will make sure. It's a subscription and license in the very top, where had some extra letters that will make sure we clean those up before. If, if this item is approved, we'll make sure we correct those misspellings in the resolution. Thank you.
Okay, thank you, Mr. Clerk. I do have an, I do have a motion and a second on, on consent agenda item B. Please vote.
Motion passes, Commissioner Borgeson abstaining, all other Commissioners voting yes.
Thank you, Mr. Clerk. Yes.
Motion to approve I seven, second.
A motion by Commissioner Borgeson to approve I seven, and a second by Commissioner Boyle. Any discussion from board members? Discussion from public? Seeing none, please vote.
Motion passes, Commissioner Rogers abstaining, for the reasons he previously mentioned, all others voting yes.
Thank you, Mr. Clerk. We now move to section three, recognitions and proclamations. And the first, and I don't know if, if they're here, the first recognition is for Jane Fentress, who worked thirty-six years in the Douglas County Health Center. And Jane, are you here by chance, on Zoom? No. Jane, we want to thank you for your hard work and dedication to the citizens of Douglas County.
Motion to approve, second.
Motion, motion by Commissioner Borgeson, second by Commissioner Boyle, please vote.
Motion passes, six to zero.
Thank you, Mr. Clerk. The second recognition is for Kimberly Stinson, who worked for twenty-one years, also at the Douglas County Health Center. And Kimberly, don't know if you're here, I don't see you. Motion to approve by Commissioner Borgeson, second by Commissioner Morgan. Kimberly, we want to extend our sincere thanks to you for the years of service to Douglas County, please vote.
Motion passes, six to zero.
Thank you, Mr. Clerk. We have no presentations, item four, and, which moves us to committee discussion and action. Under the Finance Committee, A, we have the budget report as presented. Item G, under the Human Resources, we have the personnel report as presented. Point of order, Commissioner Kavanaugh?
Yes, under the item D, Community Services will hold a hearing this afternoon at 1:00 PM in room nine oh three. And the topic of that will be environmental services, presentation and update. The public is invited, and you can attend live or virtually via Zoom. On the county's website, you can get the Zoom ID and password. Thank you.
Hey, any other discussion on committee? Commissioner Morgan?
I was going to ask for personal privilege before you go into the executive session, so, not on the committees, but personal privilege.
Can, can I?
When it's appropriate.
Now is probably appropriate, go ahead.
Okay. I wanted to just clarify, last week, you know, I'm supportive of what this board certainly did last week in voting on the mental health facility. My question was a square footage, and I had the privilege yesterday of making sure that I walked through all that area, which I've done probably three other times with Sherry Driver, who I greatly respect and appreciate her constant work in that area. And what I'd like to suggest to this board, and I don't want to have any discussion today about it, but I've worked on probably well over about it, but I've worked on probably well over a million square feet of planning and office layouts, and that work over my real estate career, from New York Seagram's building to Irvine, California, 300,000 feet out there, a couple times, in Fullerton, California. And what I'd like to do is see if this board might allow a couple of us from the board to serve, and we'll have our chairman and vice chairman decide that with Sherry's input, and work with Sherry as we lay out the drawings, because there's certainly going to be some efficiencies, and Sherry and I talked a little bit about it, like the nurses' station between the two departments. We're in probably five or six different locations there. And when you start to put that together, it becomes more efficient. And my hope is, we might gain several thousand feet, or how we lay that out, and Sherry's input and her people is most important compared to what I might state. But I'm just hopeful that somehow, working with our architect, that we might save several million dollars, which we know we have needs for, maybe at the youth center, certainly at our health center and other departments. And that's all I'm trying to do. And I wanted the board to know that I would like to be part of that and give that extra time working with Sherry. And I just wanted the board to know that, because this is an important service that the county provides. And secondly, it's over $20 million. And if you can save just a little bit of money at $800 a foot, it's pretty substantial. If we even get a couple thousand feet out of it, it's going to be helpful. And that's all I want to do. And I thank you for your listening and attention.
Thank you, Commissioner Morgan. We do have need for an executive session for contract negotiations. Point of personal privilege, Commissioner Kavanaugh?
Thank you. I appreciate what Commissioner Morgan's said here, and I think we all appreciate his expertise in this area and how helpful that could be. We just had a board of trustees meeting at the health center yesterday, talking about needed upgrades there, and the hope that we could use some ARPA funding for those, because we've had electrical failures and heating and air conditioning issues. And the total, just for that maintenance going forward, would be over $5 million. And they're looking for ARPA funding on that. So if we could do a little bit of savings, as he's indicated, that would immediately have a positive effect on the overall health center campus. Incidentally, I forgot to say, the environmental services committee will also be urging people to come out for Earth Day, which is Saturday at Elmwood Park. And hopefully, we'll have a nice Earth Day. So please come out for Earth Day on Saturday. Thank you. I believe it is 10 to 5, something like that. Yeah.
All right. Well, we do have, I'm going to say it again, we do have need for an executive session for contract negotiations and personnel discussion. Do I have a motion and a second to go into executive?
Commissioner, Commissioner, this is Trucey York. I apologize for interrupting. Would you add legal advice to that as well? Make it three times?
I'm adding, I'm adding legal advice to our executive session. And a motion by Commissioner Morgan, second by Commissioner Boyle.
And it's contract and what, Mike?
Contract, legal, and personnel.
Thank you.
Please vote.
Motion passes six to zero.
Motion by Commissioner Borgeson to reconvene and adjourn, second by Commissioner Boyle. Motion passes six to zero. We're adjourned at 11:22 a.m.